24, 2023, the time is 2:00 PM. And we are here for our weekly business meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order. In attendance are Commissioners Brooks, Matari, and Duncan. And if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Snow, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. All right. Changes to the agenda. I know we have two emergency items to add. Are there any other changes? I'll speak to the first item, which is the appointment to the Waterways Advisory Board. They expired December 31st, and we had two people who reapplied for their positions. They have a special meeting tomorrow. And therefore, if we did not confirm them today, then they would not be able to participate on the advisory board tomorrow. So I would entertain a motion to add Waterways Advisory Board appointments to this meeting.
I move that we add the advisory board appointment. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'm losing my voice again.
I move that we add the advisory order board appointments to the agenda today.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Motion carries. The second item, and I will have Captain Smart speak to it. We have some vehicles ready to be paid for, and they're kind of stuck unless we get this payment out to them. So Captain Smart, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. Kevin Smart for the record. Again, we'd just like to add to the agenda to be able to speak to the fact that the vehicles are here. And we'd like to add to be able to request those fundings be released so that we can start paying for those. We can't get access to those until that check is cut to Ford dealership here. And they're currently just in a staging area at the dealership in Utah. And so we're just kind of pressing the button to try to get on the agenda quicker to get that process going so PVI can start building those sooner than later to get those back up to us.
Okay. So they're just being transported across town to PVI?
Correct.
Okay. Brandy, cutting the check, how does that? Do we need to do something additionally special with this agenda item?
I explained to Captain Smart that if you approve it today, it'll take a week to cut the check. And he said that that would suffice.
Okay. So I would take a motion to add this to the agenda to expedite the build-out of the vehicles.
I make a motion that we expedite the payment to build out the vehicles for the sheriff's office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. So now we have the two items added. And I would say that we would just handle them first in the first order of business. So, two. Okay. So going back to our agenda, I would take a motion to approve meeting minutes, items one through five.
I can't do it long enough.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes, items one through five.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. And then consent calendar, items six and seven.
I make a motion that we approve the items six and seven on the consent calendar.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Motion carries. And now for the payables. You got the payables? Can you?
I'll try.
You can try?
I've got a printout if you want me to just hand it down to Bruce.
And then I have it too, Bruce. So I don't know if you. It's page 27. Oh, you got it.
I make a motion that we approve the payables for this week for a total of $582,233.36.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. For the Waterways Advisory Board appointments, we have Mike, Michael Pelissero, and Tom Torgerson. They both are requesting reappointment. And the chairman for the board, along with the director, have recommended that these two be reappointed. Any questions or thoughts? And the date is December 31st. And there are the names. Twenty-five. Can I take a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the appointments of Michael Pelissero. Forgive me for pronouncing it incorrectly. And Tom Torgerson to the Waterways Board.
And expiring?
And expiring on December 31st, 2025.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Motion passes. And now we will handle the patrol vehicles. And Captain Smart, I'll just have you speak to some numbers and the fact that we had approved the ordering of these months ago. And now they're here a little bit early, I think, from what we thought.
Yeah. It's kind of a surprise, you know, again, Commissioners, I thank you guys for helping us jump through all the hurdles to get to this point. We're starting to see the finish line. I got an email Sunday evening at like 6:00. And I was like, 29 vehicles are sitting down in Utah, ready to be offloaded to PVI. Three more are in the process of finishing the build line at the dealership. So we should be receiving those here by February 1st or so. And so that would be a total of 32. And so we're looking at trying to transfer all of the funds into our line items necessary to cover the cost of the vehicles and the upfitting for here further for 30 of those to be patrol vehicles and two of those to be detention vehicles. Still waiting on word of the other 15 that we had ordered on whether or not they're going to be allowed to be built or not. There's a chance that that's going to be halted, that we got the bulk of what's going to be delivered to our region. And we might just be the lucky ones for that part right now.
Brandy, as far as all the memo breaks out, a bunch of different items, what do you want as far as the motion and finances? Or you just want to use the memo that describes all the different charges to the different agencies?
I think the way the memo has it outlined, I didn't get a chance to see that actually before the meeting. But Kevin and I talked, and the numbers that he told me matched, which I had set aside. So I think we should be good to go. I think he added an additional amount for incidentals.
Sixteen thousand.
Yes. He said so their prices may have increased.
Okay. So Dave, can we just approve it per the memo? Or you want all the amounts stated on the record?
Per the memo. It sounds like it's fairly detailed.
It is. Yeah. So, all right. Questions? Okay. Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the payment of the 29 KCSO patrol cars per the memo dated 1/24/23.
And the additional three?
And the additional three on top of that.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. Item nine. Thank you, Stephen, for waiting. Great application. And this is a bipartisan infrastructure. What's the L stand for?
Leg- law.
Law.
Bipartisan law.
Okay. Grant. And it's for taxiways NHGL and aircraft parking, apron, pavement maintenance with the FAA, and cash match with ITD and the county. So go ahead.
Commissioner Stephen Kierger for the record. This is a grant application to the FAA. We're going to be using our remaining bill money for 23. That's our bipartisan infrastructure law money. It is basically to pavement maintenance on our north side taxiways to just keep them in good shape. This will also do some of the aprons that we own as well in the standcraft ramps areas as well. That's just a application. And once we get a grant in July or August, we'll know if we actually do that. We will be bidding this out here in the next couple of months as well. They'll say accept it.
Any questions for Stephen?
Nope.
Do you want to make a motion?
Well, make a motion?
Yeah. I guess Bill's out today, so he'll second your. And if you want to trade with me, I'll trade with you.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the grant application, the BIL grant, for the taxiways NHGL and aircraft parking apron pavement maintenance for $587,047 with a cash match from ITD and the county of $32,614.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Item 10, Board Approval Request Certificate of Final Completion for the Gulf Stream Road and Utilities Extension Project. Mr. Kierger again.
Stephen Kierger for the record. This is just a sign-off that the Gulf Stream Road is finalized, and this is a notification to La Verrière that it is done. The airport staff has inspected it, as well as our Dura has now inspected it. So it meets the specification, and it has been completed.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Stephen? Okay. Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the request for the certificate of final completion of Gulf Stream Road and Utilities Expansion Project at the airport.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 11, Board Approval Request Amount Levied for Indigent Public Defense with the Auditor's Office and Ms. Lynch.
Good afternoon. Alicia Lynch, Audit Department, for the record. The document provided to the Board reaffirms the Board's decision to levy $0 for indigent public defense. This letter certifies the last three years amounts to the State Tax Commission. Our purpose today is to memorialize what was certified to the state on public record. No action by the Board is required. This is to maintain transparency with the public.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
No.
Motion?
I make a motion that the Board approve the amount levied for indigent public defense and auditor.
Is that sufficient? Okay. Second. Sorry, Bill.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. And now we have Cooney County and the City of Hayden Law Enforcement Services agreement with the City of Hayden. And Captain Smart, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is the contract to provide law enforcement services to the City of Hayden that we have provided for several years. This one here would last us through the end of this fiscal year, at which time we will renegotiate again with them in anticipation of their levy that was passed. So this one here would just carry us through the end of this fiscal year to provide these services that are in place.
Okay. And are you negotiating at the end of this fiscal year or before then?
Well, we'll need to start on that here, you know, by July to start hammering out what the new contract is going to look like so that come October 1st, it will be in place and set to go from there.
Their fiscal year start October 1st as well as ours?
They are on the same as us, yes. We'll be able to have that all ironed out, hopefully.
Okay. Questions?
No questions.
All right. Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the City of Hayden Law Enforcement Services agreement between the City of Hayden and Sheriff's Office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. And item 13, this is the Hayden Boat Slip MOU with the City of Hayden and the sheriff. And are rec safety online?
Yes, Commissioner Duncan, this is Sergeant Ryan Miller for the record.
Go right ahead.
All right. Okay. So yes, this is about a year-long process or more working with the City of Hayden. They're going to use impact fees that are expiring to purchase and construct and place a boat slip, a honeysuckle beach boat launch area. We already have a boat that is dedicated for that lake. So the boat slip is going to allow us to put a boat on one of our busiest waterways that before we've had to, you know, go back to the office, get a boat, load it up, get it ready, and drive through all the traffic to get there. So this is going to save us quite a bit of time by already having the boat on the water. This is for routine patrols and for emergency responses in that area. I believe the total right now is around $57,000 in impact fees, the project cost. It keeps going up every time a few months pass. But it's about $52,000. That's not for everything that we want, but it at least gets the slip in the water. And the only other thing that we'll have to do after that is construct a chain-link fence around it for security. All of this is being paid for out of those impact fees. If we do go over the $57,000 or whatever they have in impact, that's when the county would be responsible to pay for anything. But as of right now, we're not anticipating that.
All right. And then I see the way the agreement's written that we have to actually allocate the funds so we're not under obligation if the funds are not allocated. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Questions?
No questions.
Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the Hayden Boat Slip MOU.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 14, Board Approval Request, a purchase of a new personal watercraft with RBS funds and Sheriff's Department and again Sergeant Miller.
Yes, Commissioner. Thank you, Sergeant Ryan Miller for the record. Just like last year, this and the next item, they're going to be pretty identical to what we did last year, replacing our aging fleet of jet skis. So we are currently, we have three of them. We'd like to have four. We had two older ones that we had transferred over to partial waterways a few months ago. So this will get us back up to four. We are on a list for it. Last year, it showed up in August. We've been on the list since August. So we're hoping that we're able to get this one as well. RBS funds, we haven't put in for that grant yet, but we do get it each year. I'm going to probably in the next week or so start filling out that application for that. So this would come from the RBS funds. And again, the PWC is not here yet. It's probably going to still be several months.
So is this mostly approval? It's to order it, right? And then you purchase it upon?
Yeah. So we have to be. Correct. We had to be put on a list for it, just like last year. The list comes out in August, and you don't know when you're going to get it. It usually is anytime from spring until the next fall. So we don't know when it's going to show up for us. So we're asking for the approval. Once it does show up, then I would like to get that check cut so we can go pick it up.
Okay. So you'll just come back before the Board when the RBS grant has been issued and the device comes in, the vehicle?
So I will have to come in front of the Board for the RBS grant. And so then I would like this to already have the other part done. So all I have to do is have the check cut at that point.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Questions?
Absolutely. Thank you.
No questions.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the new personal watercraft with the RBS funds for the Sheriff's Office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. Motion carries. And item 15, Board Approval Request. It's the purchase of the boat bladder replacement with RBS funds and once again Sergeant Miller.
Again, Sergeant Miller? Yes. Thank you. This is again identical to last year. We have some of our boats that are, the bladders, that's the inflatable portion that goes around the aluminum, is aging. So this was another boat. It's been on the to-do list for the past few years. The bladder was failing at the end of last summer, so we had to fill it up every single day. So that is getting built down in California, and it will take several months to have that product here. But again, it's going to be RBS that will cover that as well.
Okay. And then is RBS used for the Marine Patrol?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And you're pretty confident that these two purchases aren't going to hamper our Marine deputies over the summer?
That's correct, Commissioners. We did get our preliminary numbers for this year. The grant that we'll be receiving is $170,000, and we'll have to have about an $80,000 match. So it puts us around $250,000. It's the most that we've ever gotten before by quite a bit. And that was due to the amount of activity that we had over last season.
Great. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much. Questions or motion?
No questions. I make a motion that the Board approve the purchase of the boat bladder using the RBS funds for the Sheriff's Office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Motion carries. And now item 16, Board Approval Request for Mitigation Funding Opportunity Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, 75% federal share. And I understand there's a change in the amount, and then there's a local match. And Director Beazey, are you handling this one?
Yes. Yes, thank you. Buildings and Grounds OEM and RMO are seeking Board approval to pursue a mitigation grant for two generators, provided both generators are deemed eligible. The estimated available federal share is $1 million with the required local match of $334,000. And that number may even go down depending upon the number of generators we're able to pursue, provided the Board approves the pre-application.
And where's the match coming from?
That's where I'm not sure. I thought that I would ask the Board as to where that match would come from. I'm not sure where it would come from. Hence the conversation.
Okay. So I imagine that we could look at five-year plan money. Of course, there's straight fund balance. I don't know of any other thing. Jody, are any of these for the courthouses?
Correct. It would be for the admin building, the justice building, and the courthouse were the initial three that were put into consideration. The courthouse unfortunately is not meeting the BCA at this moment, but the Justice Center and the admin building do meet the BCA. And what that is, it's the benefit-cost analysis that we must conduct to ensure that the investment is worth the long-term cost.
Okay. And so I'm wondering if district court funds can be used for part of this then? And I've got Brandy coming up to a microphone.
Okay. Perfect. Yes.
Usually if anyone wants to use district court funds, I get a legal opinion because those are very restricted. So I didn't get any heads up about this ahead of time. So I would ask that if you want us to come up with possibilities for match, that we defer this until another meeting. So it's just the first time hearing of it.
Okay. So Jody, is there?
And.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just want to make a clarification. The reason why it was put on the agenda, the business meeting, is I wasn't sure whether it should be a discussion item with the Board or if it should be on the business meeting. And it really isn't to make a decision in terms of the direction of where the source of the match is, whether or not the Board would even entertain wanting to go through the process, knowing that the match is $334,000.
Okay. So three generators. Our portion would be $334,000 estimated at this point with $1 million in grants. So is that something that you want her to go ahead and apply for? And then we can talk where the grant match comes from? Or what would you like to do with this?
Well, I guess the first question is just what is the likelihood of this happening where we're actually going to need these generators? And if the likelihood is low, then does it make sense to even entertain it?
We've used, we've needed a generator at least twice in the last year. I'm not sure over the last four years with the different windstorms and issues that we've had.
You approved generators to be paid for with some ARPA funds, but I could be misjudged.
It was HVAC stuff. I don't remember any generators with ARPA. So that would also be a question.
So again, with Buildings and Grounds, there was a concern about admin in particular not having the proper backup generator, and it's not the right size. So that was one of the discussion items. And unfortunately, this is a grant opportunity that came available that was unbeknownst to any of us, and there's a short turnaround. So I realize as a pre-application that the Board would still have the opportunity to say no, and we could then determine whether or not it's even going to be funded. But again, it would have to source the match. And Greg is not there for his thoughts where he may have thought it would come from, but we certainly can entertain where the source would be.
Okay. Yeah. I think Greg and I have spoken about this briefly, and I don't remember any particular source at this point. So I would be okay with approving the pre-application, which is due January 31st. Then we have time to talk about it before the actual application is due February 28th. In the meantime, I can talk to Brandy and Greg, and we can identify some sources and even potentially, I don't know if ARPA would be a source either, but Jody, you and I can talk about that at a different time. So I would still be willing to look at this further. But it's just a pre-application that we would approve today with no obligation to make the final application or to spend the funds. So thoughts?
I'm fine with that because it gives us more time to discuss it.
Okay. And I can put it on a status update if you want to discuss it at length.
Okay.
Okay. So Bill, is that okay with you? Okay. So then I would take a motion to go through the pre-application process.
I make a motion that we approve the pre-application process for the Mitigation Funding Opportunity Hazard Mitigation Grant Program.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, Jody. All right. Item 17, Grant Applications. And this is the Waterways Improvement Fund with Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation, an amount of forty thousand one hundred five dollars, and cash match from the vessel fund of eleven thousand dollars with our sheriff and rec safety. Is this Sergeant Miller? Or Dorian, are you handling this?
Sergeant Miller can handle it. I can speak to the, what the equipment is.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Sergeant Miller, for the record. Yes, so this is the Waterways Improvement Fund. Last year, we were successful in getting a repower for our sawar boat. That project is now complete. We'll be submitting for the closeout here shortly. That, in that fund, we, or that project, it was forty-four thousand dollars from vessel, forty-four thousand dollars from the state, and we were able to get this almost ninety thousand dollar repower that we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise, or would have spent a lot more of the vessel money. So this is going to be a little bit smaller of a project. We're asking for forty thousand dollars from the state. We're going to put up eleven thousand from the vessel. This will take five of our vessels and get them into, pretty much into the twenty-first century. We currently do not have depth sounding electronics on them and GPS. So that's what this is going to do on several of our vessels. It's very important for us to know where we are and the depth when we're either responding to emergencies or for routine patrols. It can cause damage to the vessels if we aren't aware of where the bottom is, essentially. And then also, when we're working at night in inclement weather, the GPS systems will help us to better navigate with, again, hopefully no injuries and no damage to county property or public's property. In addition, this grant that we're putting in forward would pay for two updated sets of binoculars with rangefinders when we're stopping vessels for various violations. It is very important for us to know the exact distance of where they are. So these binoculars that we carry would have that in it. So we're just upgrading the fleet with those. And one additional, this is probably the more expensive portion, it's a FLIR thermal imaging unit. Forward-looking infrared is what FLIR stands for. We have one in our entire fleet right now. This would put a second one in our fleet. We do want to get more down the road. That in and of itself is twenty-four thousand dollars. It allows for us, again, at night to see, to either search for a victim in the water, on the surface of the water, or while we're pulling up to boats and it's pitch black and you can't see, it actually allows you to identify who's on the boat, how many people are on the boat. This particular unit is a little bit better than the one that we currently have, to where it actually takes a visual picture and puts it over top of the, it overlays it with the thermal, so I can see a color of a buoy from a quarter mile out. So again, just updating our electronics on our boats. And this will bring all of, or five of our boats, so almost half of our boats, to where we would like to get our whole fleet eventually.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
So the total match is eleven thousand?
Yes.
Okay. That's in the budget.
Yeah. So...
It is.
Okay. Is it from vessel or RBS? It says vessel.
This is from vessel. We can't match a grant with a grant, so it is from vessel.
Okay. Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the grant application for the Waterways Improvement Fund, Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation, for forty thousand one hundred five dollars, with a cash match from the vessel fund of eleven thousand for the sheriff's office.
Second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Sergeant Miller.
Thank you, Commissioners, for all my requests.
Item eighteen, modification number three to professional services master agreement with XTR Value Services LLC, Sam Wilkins, principal, and our assessor department. So Mr. Kovacs?
Commissioners, the agenda item we have before you today is our existing contract with XTR Value Services. We are seeking approval from the board of county commissioners to approve the modification that I presented to you. Ideally, we would prefer that you approve the modification, the first version that I submitted to you. I did submit two versions to you. The first version includes phase one and phase two. Phase one is, I will summarize it, is to perform an evaluation and assessment of the present system as now configured in order to maintain the functioning and operation, operability of the system, while simultaneously working to make improvements to the extent determined reasonable and cost-effective. Phase number two would be to perform an evaluation, a fit gap analysis overall of the system, because the system is end of life. And we need to begin now to work to prepare for that day when we need to replace the system. Last year, when we set our budget, our budget was, we asked to insert a placeholder into our budget for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The board did do that. The values that I have presented to you in this recommendation are for one hundred, these are estimated values, because this is a time and materials contract, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for phase one and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for phase two. We have had some additional conversation with Commissioner Matarri. He has asked some questions, and we've provided responses to those questions. And so if the board at this time does not have appetite to approve the agreement as recommended, that's the reason I submitted the alternate, which is the version that you got today, which would be for phase one only. However, I would caution the board that we absolutely need to make a movement forward in adopting an additional contract for a full assessment of our system, so that we can work towards the eventual replacement of that system. As I understand it, the treasurer's office has engaged XTR Services for an assessment. They're getting that assessment performed, and they're looking at the same thing. They're looking at replacing the system. And I don't mean to speak out of turn, but we were at a conference this past fall in October. The treasurer's office was there, and so were the assessor's office, and we both looked at the same system. And that is my recommendation, Commissioners.
Okay. I'm fine just with phase one right now and take a harder look at phase two. Do you think February seventh, or do you need more time than that for phase two?
Would February seventh work for the assessor's office?
And let me make sure I understand what you mean by February seventh. We would get together and discuss, and then look to have something placed on an agenda for February seventh?
Yes. For phase two.
Phase two.
We would be complete as far as our discussion, so that we can proceed, either getting it on a meeting, you know, on or around there, or as soon thereafter.
I'm good with that, with February seventh or soon thereafter.
Okay. And then the other modification, who is the primary contact to, with XTR?
So the agreement, the master agreement outlines that. It does specify, it's modeled after the county's existing contract with Manitron. And it does identify IT as the, the Manitron contract identifies IT as the project, or the system owner and project manager. And so this XTR contract is modeled after that. However, we would need, we at the assessor's office would need to make final decisions in terms of whether or not the changes work for the assessor's office.
Okay. And is that set up with IT? You guys are prepared to?
IT did review the agreement, the master's agreement we're talking about, and they approved that when we approved it one year ago.
We're not speaking for myself. We saw the first iteration of the contract that's before you. In phase one, it talks about keeping the system, or making the system operational. We do definitely agree with that. There's one item in particular right now that needs to be addressed, is the process steps. And that's what we know for sure. There's probably a few other things in the assessor's office. We're not aware of those. But anything over and above those process steps should probably be a conversation that we have to decide to go forward. But I don't think that answers your question. But yes, we would be responsible definitely for the process steps and conversations going forward for anything else over and above that.
Okay, yeah, because at twelve-thirty today, I didn't have time to read the twenty-nine pages of the updated contract. So I just wanted to get that on the record, that IT's the contact, it's for process steps, that's phase one, hundred and fifty thousand.
It was submitted last week, Friday. It's the same version, only the one last week
Changes.
had both phases. The one that was submitted today, only one phase. So it was the same. I will add that the, this modification is structured as a task order contract. So what we will do is we will work with the consultant, XTR, to develop a scope specific to the particular change that we're working on. They will give us a cost estimate or a time estimate. We will then work with IT on whatever necessary details, and then develop a more specific written specification for that task, and then issue a notice to proceed. So this is not, this is not a guarantee that they're going to get all this work done and do all this work. We're going to step through it on a, on a, on a line-by-line basis.
Okay. Questions?
Does that work for IT?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess Brandy's got a question?
I just have a clarifying question. So you're only, we're not going to need to appropriate any more fund balance then? I don't need to make an adjustment? It sounded like the two hundred and fifty thousand that's already budgeted is covering what's being approved today?
The Commissioners, we did ask the Commissioners to move that into our budget out of CAT forty-six, which I believe was done. We do have it in our budget.
Right. But it was for a different contract.
No, it was not. It was for this one.
Yeah, it was for this one.
So I think you might be getting confused, because there was two, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There was one for XTR, and then there was one for Highland. Yeah. So each one of them had two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right. So the two fifty was adopted, the two sixty for Highland was a mid-year appropriation. So right now their fund balance is at about six hundred thousand. So I want to clarify, I don't need to pull out any more fund balance at this point.
Does not sound like it, but you would if we approved phase two.
I will. That's another one of my questions, but...
Yeah, but phase two will be tabled for a little bit. Questions, Bill?
I feel like you did. You've got thirty-four pages of single-spaced. I have to look at it at minister one. I've not enough time for that.
Okay. All right. Bruce, anything else?
I don't have any questions, but obviously, you know, we originally talked about phase one and phase two for today. You know, I'm good with phase one. If that's something that we can do today, then I say let's do that. If we need to revisit it to carve them out, then, you know, I'll leave that up to the balance of the board's discretion.
I'm fine with phase one today.
Phase one.
Okay. So it sounds like unanimous.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the modification number three to professional services master agreement with XTR Value Services LLC for phase one, with Sam Wilkins, the principal, Belikovac's assessor.
And I would say that it's dated January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Phase one passes, and then we'll be able to talk about phase two and bring that back before the board.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your support.
All right. Item nineteen, board approval request memorandum of understanding with Kootenay Fire and Rescue Lease Funds and North Idaho Fair. So it's between the county and, for the Fire and Rescue Lease Funds. And I don't know, Jerry, did you want to lead us in this, or?
Jerry Johnson, chairman of the North Idaho Fair Board, for the record. Some time ago, we reached an agreement with Kootenay Fire and Kootenay County to lease, a fifty-year lease, about an acre and a half on the fairgrounds on the very southeast corner. The amount's approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that fifty-year lease. Previously, the board approved that that money would go to the fairgrounds into the capital improvement fund, which we've been building the last few years. So to do that, we want, we wrote a memorandum of understanding between the Commissioners and the Fair Board. And that's what's on the agenda today. And legal has reviewed it, and so it's before you at this point.
Okay. So a little bit more background for Commissioner Matarri. There was ample discussion about where this money should go, because it's a lease of county property, and the Commissioners decided to give it to the fairgrounds. What the lease says, though, is if they leave prior to the fifty years, that they want it prorated. And so they are building it right now. And what I had asked was this memorandum of understanding to say that the county would get that money back from the fairgrounds should KCFR not go through with their agreement. So right now, it says, this MOU says reserved funds, which means half of the funds that were agreed to put aside for a certain amount of time until the building project was completed. Because, you know, assumption would be, they complete the building, they're going to be there for fifty years. So I'm just a little uncomfortable in today's age to say, okay, yeah, you'll give us the reserve funds back, but if we're going to owe KCFR more than the reserve funds, I don't want that to be on county taxpayers to make up that difference. So I'm not sure if you had a chance to dive into the agreement or understand the nuance of the reserve funds versus all of the funds. So is, just your thoughts?
I don't want to give them all the money.
So that, yeah, so that's not what's contemplated today. They've been given all of the lease money. It's just whether or not they're going to pay us back everything that KCFR would require if they left early. I guess it's...
Well, they're investing approximately, over eight million dollars into the fire station. It's well underway at this point. It will serve the area. The reason they want to build this station is it currently, I live in Dalton Gardens, and they currently serve my community, which is at Kootenay Fire, from over by the Croc Center. And they can't get out of that location anymore, so they wanted to move up this way to serve two things. One, the Dalton Gardens area, and the other one, a lot better access to I-90, so they can service the area to the east of town. So...
I think they're shutting down the Croc Center one on Golf Course Road. I think they're shutting down fire station number four once this one's up and running. So once again, we talked probable versus possible. I just like contingency for possible, even though probably it's not going to happen. So I will leave it up to you.
I was just curious, what is the KOBCC?
That's us, KCBOCC.
Okay, so that was a typo.
Probably.
As I was looking through that.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Well, no, that's the, oh, hang on. North Idaho Fair Board's constituent of the KCBOCC. Yeah, that is a typo. Sorry.
Without the context, when I read it, I kind of wasn't really able to follow through as much. It helps a little more. Is it something that we could at least maybe revisit next week, just with a little more research, or?
Yes, yes. If you wanted to meet with Jerry or Alexia, that would be fine. February seventh would be our next, because we're gone next week. So February seventh would be the next thing. I don't think there's a real big rush, because the funds were given, I'm not sure how many months ago.
Well, they're still in your bank account, not our bank account.
Oh, we have not transferred that yet? Waiting for the MOU?
I'm unaware that they've been. I think we're waiting for this MOU to move the funds.
Right. So again, I don't think it's going to hurt to wait till February seventh, because are you waiting for the funds to pay for something, or just?
Yeah. No, we're anticipating doing some stuff here in the very near future, but that would all come in front of the board as well. So, yeah, Bruce would feel more at ease, learning a little more, come out, we'll show him what's going on, talk to Chief Way. Yeah, no problems.
Thank you.
Okay. So we won't take action on that. Thank you very much, Jerry. I appreciate that. Item twenty, Legislative Advocate for Public Defender's Office, Molitor Associates LLC. We had talked about bringing this forward. There's been one change made. Because this is the three largest counties, they've kind of asked for Kootenay County to have a little bit more skin in the game. So while original request was five thousand dollars, they've asked for ten thousand dollars. So I'm willing to discuss with the board this, and it's in order to help the legislators make the best decision on the way they organize public defense going forward. So any thoughts about that?
Are we going to get our money's worth on this?
We've actually already gotten more than that worth out of this advocate. Yeah, we've already met with her a couple different times in the last six months. And so I think it's a good deal. The funding of the public defender can cover that for right now, but then it depends on, as we get further into the year, if they start to get close in their B budget, then we'd have to come revisit and find out where we could potentially transfer A money over because of the reimbursements from Nez Pearson, Latah Counties on some work that we're doing for them.
I mean, I know there's a lot of problems with the public defender side of things, and...
Well, not right now. Right now, it works great, but it's not going to work great if they do something in the legislature.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's in process.
Yeah. Yeah, it's in process. So I'm comfortable with this, and I've been involved in this for at least two, two and a half years now, the legislative side of it. So, but it's up to you guys. I mean, it's, like I said, I think we've already gotten our money's worth just because of the relationship that this advocate's been able to build and been able to bring our public defender and I into.
I think it's worthwhile.
Worthwhile? Okay.
Yeah, that sounds fair.
Okay. So then the motion for this will need to include the change to ten thousand, and I do have that paperwork for us to sign.
Okay. Well, I make a motion that we approve the Legislative Advocate for Public Defender's Office, Molitor and Associates, for the increase to ten thousand dollars.
Second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, I think we can handle twenty-one and twenty-two together, and these are resolution numbers two zero, two three, zero four, and zero five, which is the classification and destruction of records for juvenile detention. And our Eric Sheffield and Brandy Bradley are here to speak to this. Thank you for your patience.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is just our annual request to have our documents that are maintained by our department classified as semi-permanent and temporary, and then allow for the destruction of those documents. There is a appendix attached that lists out those documents that we'll be destroying this year.
Questions?
No questions.
Okay. Bill, questions? All right, motion?
I make a motion that we approve item twenty-one, resolution twenty-two-three oh four, for classified records juvenile detention and... juvenile detention, and Item 22, the Resolution 2023-05, to destroy the records for juvenile detention.
Second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. And that concludes our Business Section of the meeting. Our status update pending. Bill, you have anything on impact fees yet till February? And then we have our meeting tomorrow with the Justice Expansion Update. So not really any things to add to that. So at this point, I will call for public comment. Okay. No public comment. 2:50. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.